District vision statement. We are one of Wisconsin's finest school districts, fostering excellence for all through innovation. And we accomplish this vision through our core values of integrity, excellence, commitment, collaboration, innovation, and kindness. Jolene, are you aware of any written communications? I take that as a no.
Mary, or I'm sorry, Gary, no, I have not received any written communication.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And do you have any indication that the public, public visitors want to address the board about agenda items tonight?
I haven't had anyone contact me about that, and I'm not seeing that there's anybody in the chat bar indicating that they would have anything to speak on.
Thank you, Jolene.
You're welcome.
Is the, do any board members care to request an adjustment of tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing none. Let us move to announcements of contributions to the district. My dog is excited about that, apparently. Mary, would you like to?
I will do that. I was trying to unmute there. We do have a number of donations. Graphic Signs and Letter Company, which is Dan Kelm, donated a congratulations class of 2020 banner for the 2020 graduation caravan. I do decorating, which is Kathy Ross and team, did many beautiful decorations for the graduation. Her and her team decorated the entire caravan route, as well as Barlow Park. And then we had a number of community organizations, Ripon Early Bird Koanis, Ripon Noon Koanis, Ripon Chamber of Commerce, the Ripon Lions Club, Ripon's, the Lioness Club, and then the Ripon Lions, the Ripon Rotary Club, Ripon American Legion, and Ripon Veterans of Foreign Wars, all worked together to donate in order to purchase chamber dollars for each of the Ripon High School seniors. There were 126 seniors at about $20 for a total of just over $2,500. So it was approximately 315 that was provided by each group, which was just a wonderful gesture that then in turn gives back to our community during this time. Sweet and Salty Ice Cream Parlor donated ice cream cones for each of the seniors. And Bill's Service donated six yearbooks for high school students at a cost of $45 each, so about $225. So Gary, we're thankful for those donations, which really went to make our graduation ceremony and celebration of seniors really exciting.
Thank you, Mary, and thank you for all the organizations and people who donated to our district. It really helped make graduation that much more special. We're now, we're now considering the district health office report prepared by our district nurse, Bonnie, I'm forgetting your last name.
Yeah, Bonnie Fisher, and she's here with us tonight.
Thank you. Bonnie, I want to congratulate you in advance for preparing another very well-constructed report, and I'd invite you to share highlights from the report with the board now.
Thank you. So the highlight of the school year, probably, I shouldn't say the highlight, but the top story was the COVID-19 issue, which will continue to be a highlight throughout the summer, and with plans for reopening for fall. Other accomplishments, I was able to, in spite of not being able to attend the nursing conference that usually happens in the spring, I was able to provide some of my own education through some NASA continuing education modules that were all online, along with the DPI's New School Nurse Conference, so that helped me a lot. Are you guys all able to hear me okay?
I am.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. It seems a little jumpy.
You're laughing there for me.
Okay. Otherwise, I have my data collection on the report, which you all have been able to see. Some of the data collection was a little bit off just because of the two and a half months of school that we were not in session. But I was surprised to see how many of the, some of the data was still quite comparable to last year in spite of missing the last two and a half months of school, such as the number of office visits. One of the highlights for my year was a student that came to us in the end of December, early January, with significant health needs. So there was a lot of training and a lot of time spent at Barlow Park this year, and a lot of collaboration in trying to manage how we were going to staff and still meet the needs of all the schools, so that I kind of touched on some of my areas of concerns and opportunities. And then the other thing that I just wanted to bring up, you know, I know you guys have all had access to see this and read this, was since my time starting in Ripon, I, this is my first job as a school nurse, so I've been learning a lot as I go along. And one of them was just the billing for Medicaid, being involved with special education students, especially those with health concerns. And one of the things I've kind of been fighting for all along, not being very vocal about it, but is just being more involved in the IEPs and 504s of the students with health needs related to those plans. A side note with the Medicaid portion is there are quite a few, I shouldn't say quite a few, some students that do receive nursing services, but I'm not a part of their IEP, so therefore I'm unable, unable to generate Medicaid billing and funding for our district. So I did explain in the report the benefits of a nurse being involved with those students that do have health needs, and obtaining release of information for open communication with their providers. Since I've started, there's been a lot of change in the roles in managing with special education, and since Becky stepped in back in January, she has been a huge advocate for me and for the health office for nursing services to be involved with those plans. So I'm definitely looking forward to continuing to work with Becky and having more involvement with that. Otherwise, those are, I know you guys all have access to the report, so I don't want to take up too much of your time going on, but those are the main highlights for me as a nurse. And if you have questions about any of the rest of it, I'd be happy to discuss.
Well, thanks, Bonnie. Do board members have questions about this health report? Okay, hearing none. Well, I'll let you think about it for another 30 seconds or so. David Scott has joined the meeting now, and I, in order to add him for voting purposes, I'm going to have to end the meeting, and then we're going to have to rejoin the meeting, okay? So are there any questions for Bonnie? Okay.
I do, I do just have one question, Gary.
Thank you. Nate, go for it.
Bonnie, I was curious if there has been some thought given, seeing as how it sounds, based off what you had mentioned a little earlier, that we are planning for school in-person in the fall as to how that would be conducted, given some of the concerns that persist around the virus.
I just want to repeat the question back to you, just to make sure I understood you correctly, because the sound seems to be very choppy on my end. And first of all, that was directed towards me, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The question was, do we have concerns about the virus with school opening up in the fall? Is that accurate?
Yes, and I guess to elaborate, has there, has there been thought as to how to, how to put in place precautions, given some of the concerns with transmission of a virus?
Yes, there have been, but during the, since school was closed, there's been weekly meetings with our state nursing super, or our supervisor, our nursing consultant. So it is a very fluid situation. There's stuff changing every, almost daily when it comes to this. But most recently, last Friday, Fond du Lac County Health Department did send out some recommendations, and then DPI will be sending out recommendations in the next couple of weeks, between this week and next week. So the guidelines for, from a health perspective, will be very dependent on what their recommendations are. And a lot of the recommendations say when feasible or if feasible. So they do kind of leave a gray area. So I think the important part is that decisions are made as a team, because it's not something that I don't think one person can make. Of course, they recommend, you know, barriers, smaller class sizes, trying to keep the same group of kids together throughout the day. There's a lot of recommendations, I could go on and on about, but those are the guidelines I would be presenting as far as fall preparations for opening.
Sure. Okay, thank you, Bonnie. I appreciate the added insight.
Are there any other questions? Okay, again, Bonnie, thank you very much for that very detailed and well-constructed report. Board members, if you would rejoin the meeting, that would be really great. And we can then move on to our next item, which is the consent agenda. Is everybody rejoined, or is anybody having trouble rejoining?
I think it's okay.
Okay. Would anybody care?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Looking for a second for the consent agenda?
I'll second. Gary, this is John.
Okay, thank you, John. I guess before we vote, does anybody have a concern with any item on the consent agenda for which they'd like something to be removed? Okay, hearing no concern, let's call for the vote on the consent agenda. The consent agenda has passed unanimously. Thank you very much. We now move to the new business section of our meeting. And the action item to be considered is a staffing, a staffing change. A memo is attached with regard to changes in music and our speech pathologist. Would anybody care to move this motion forward?
So moved.
Josh, Andy, yep.
I think that was Nicole, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And Andy, did you second?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any, is there any, are there any questions?
This is Tom. I got one question. Is this choir or band?
Choir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Mary or Jonah? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, another personnel issue that I guess is actually related to the previous motion. Would somebody care to move this item?
David, so moved?
Thank you, David.
This is Nate, I'll second.
I think Nate got that second. Any questions about this voluntary transfer? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Motion passes. Thank you. The next items are recommendations for hiring personnel. I would appreciate somebody moving this item.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we'll give that to Tom, and then was it Josh seconding?
If not, David, I'll second.
Okay, David. Okay, are there any questions or comments about the proposed hiring recommendations? We'll call for the vote. The motion passes unanimously, and I look forward to meeting the new staff.
They will hear, they will be here with us in some format in the fall. Hopefully, it's face-to-face.
I hope so, too. Okay, we are now through new business, and we're at the superintendent reports section of the meeting.
I had a chance to meet with legislators on Friday through CISA 6. An overall conversation just really focused on requests schools had in terms of the start of the school year, and just asking legislators to share any information they have with us as soon as possible, especially if there's anything related to any budget changes as they go into session here, the ability to possibly start school a little bit earlier in the event that we would need to be out. Just any of those things that they could give us information on would be extremely helpful. As Bonnie said, we're waiting to hear from DPI on June 22nd. They're supposed to release some guidance for us. The little bit of drafting in terms of the document that I've seen is definitely for, you know, our traditional face-to-face format, to be prepared to do whatever you can to keep kids safe with social distancing with that. And then obviously, we'll have our virtual option, which we ran this year, should that, should that be needed. But they're really recommending some type of hybrid model in between, and, and schools are, are having conversations about, you know, if, if we could possibly even have half the students in on some rotational basis, whether it's several days a week or alternating weeks to not have to have everybody out all the time. But as Bonnie said, I think, you know, more guidance is going to come to us for that, and hopefully help us, because I think it's going to be probably more at a local level or an area or county level where we're really monitoring and looking at the number of cases that we have to help us determine whether or not it's safe for students to be in school or if they would, they would need to be out of school. So I always tease that snow days were the hardest days sometimes to make those big decisions because you knew you were impacting so many families. I truly hope that the decision for COVID doesn't come down to the superintendent level, because I will never complain about a snow day again. So I mean, I think, you know, everyone is in the same place where we want kids in school. We know that's good for, for them, and it gives them the best opportunity to have the services they need and get a good education. It helps families when the kids are back in school, so parents can get to work. But ultimately, we have to balance that with making sure that, that our kids are safe and, and take care of that. So I, I anticipate many conversations here in the weeks to come as we, as we look to move forward, so.
Mary, do you, did I hear correctly that there, people are considering, are thinking about an option in which maybe half the students would attend? Would that be, do you think, by class, within class, or maybe, maybe some of the, for example, like half of the grade classrooms would attend in some kind of rotating basis? Was, was any detail sort of bandied about?
You know, I think that's going to probably come down to local school districts to determine what it might look like. But when you think of some of just the, the levels as we open up our, our economy and get things rolling again, we're looking at the number of people that are together in any venue. And when you think of some of our elementary schools and, or middle or high schools, and you're thinking that we have three, four, five, 600 kids together in a building at the same time, lowering that number, you know, what could you do with 200 kids? And if you separate them by wings, can you get them down where it's, you know, 50 to 75 kids that are together at a time? And I, Gary, I think we would probably have to do some grade levels at each day, and we certainly would have to look at getting family groupings together. And then we have to look at what that would do with busing, and making sure that kids are spread out on buses in every other seat. And we'll have to have conversations about masks and face shields and, and those kind of things to, to keep individuals as safe as possible while we're trying to bring them back, if we're in the mode where we're looking at that hybrid model. I guess, you know, what I'm hearing, and as Bonnie shared, when, when we had guidance at the state level with the supervisor for our nurses, she really talked about that herd immunity. And then until we get to a place like we are with other diseases, where majority of people in the community have some level of immunity, we don't really know who's, who's at risk, because people can be walking around having the virus but no symptoms, and others may have it and have some very serious symptoms.
This is David. If I, I'd just like to ask a question. I can see all sorts of ways where you could actually manage to get students back in school. The one I'm struggling with is busing, and it seems like that's the one that would get very expensive very fast, and, and where the legislation, legislators ought to have an interest in helping deal with that. Has there been discussing about busing on the part of the legislators?
You know, they aren't getting involved in terms of, of what that looks like. Their conversations are really around working with your local contractors, determining what's, what's in that. I think that's, as we started to talk about just what that looks like, even if, you know, some districts were saying, well, would you do a morning and an afternoon session? But if you do something like that, you're looking at having to clean buses every day, you know, versus maybe alternating by weeks and being able to utilize all of your buses and resources for half of your kids to try to spread them out. And other districts are saying, you know, there may be parents that are willing to contract and maybe would prefer to just drive their kids in, and could you set up some kind of a, a system to, to have as few kids on the bus as possible while still providing as much support to parents as you can? And then there's conversations about, you know, do you have alternate learning centers where kids on those virtual days can be if they need to, especially if parents need to get to work, where they could have some interaction with at least a staff member, maybe not their teacher, and their teacher would be virtual? So a lot of great ideas are, are moving around, and, you know, hundreds of, of just, thousands of districts are in the same place trying to figure this out. So I think a lot's going to move forward in the next, in the next month or so. But yeah, there's, there's a lot of questions, and I think sometimes the more you brainstorm and try to figure it out, more questions just keep coming of what that looks for, looks like for everyone, and how do we do the best we can to keep everyone safe?
Okay, well, thank you, Mary. This will certainly be interesting.
Yeah, the ex, the next document again was just kind of an overview of some of the things that we're seeing from DPI in terms of considerations and, and thoughts out there. And I just thought it might be helpful for the board and public, just to see some of the things that everyone is trying to remember and, and keep in the forefront as, as those conversations are, are had. And you can see that idea of, you know, in-person, virtual, and then some type of blended learning and what that might be. And again, it's, it's going to be a work in progress, and I, I anticipate that rather than full-scale closures like what we've seen, there's going to probably be a little larger degree of flexibility by areas in the state for us to respond to the actual numbers that, that we're seeing and, and cases that we're seeing to get kids in when we can. And then if we need to take that, you know, 14-day break or longer to, to just have some social distancing, we can do that as well.
Are there, has, has the administration been able to accomplish things like perhaps figuring out mask provisioning, or shield provisioning, or hand washing stations, stuff like that?
Yeah, we're start, we're starting to look at some of those things to get moving, obviously, even before we have the full plan. We would like to have some option for masks for students. You know, it's that whole idea, we'd like probably to keep them at school and wash them there to make sure that everybody has it when they come back the next day. But then what do you do on buses? Is that a second, a secondary mask? We've seen that there are some removable filters as well inside the masks, which make them a little stronger. So there could be a washed mask every day, plus this, this additional filter. And we've had some conversation about shields, too, because we recognize that for teachers working with, with children, especially our youngest kids, they need to see their teacher's face and the expressions and, and see that interaction for that feedback. So we're looking into that. CISA has done some kind of group pricing for us. So we're, we're looking to get our order out for that, and have reached out to them again for the shields. And then I know Brian has already begun to put in some of the hand sanitizing dispensers, and is thinking ahead to, you know, automatic sinks and, and those types of things. But yeah, it just gets complicated. You come down to, you know, just opening and closing bathroom doors and flushing toilets and those kind of things, and you start to think about all of the touches that little kids have in a day, and how to ensure that we're getting good hand washing in and, and not spreading things. So certainly having conversations about what type of check-in would we do with kids at the beginning of the day, whether it's taking temperatures or having parents fill something in online ahead of time to say, my child doesn't have any symptoms as they come to school. But you have to balance that with, you don't want all these kids standing in line waiting to have their temperature taken, and that becomes the place where they interact in our, our closest. So what I anticipate is, is as we meet, we're meeting next week after the guidance from DPI comes out as a district team, and as we start to have those conversations and kind of put together our, you know, I kind of envision a COVID-19 handbook addendum as we, as we move through into next year, having some of those recommendations in there for the board to see and, and endorse as we look to start the school year.
What are we thinking about if, if we have either hybrid? What are we thinking about if we have either hybrid or face-to-face completely and a student gets sick? Presumably then that teacher has to quarantine for a couple of weeks. Does that classroom go virtual at that point? Or are we not yet to the point of thinking too much about that?
Yeah, I think those are the things we're going to have to look at. Does the teacher go virtual, but we have an aide in the actual classroom? So those kids can be in their classroom and not lose yet another week, especially if they're alternating weeks already. Certainly if they're alternating weeks and a student needs to be out, you know, you kind of have that, one week was virtual anyways, they're missing one week of face-to-face. But yeah, it does start to bring up those questions. And David, what I thought you were going to ask was, the other question is, what if a student exhibits symptoms during the day and it likely could be cold or allergy or those kind of things? But where will we have that child go? And how do we make sure we're partnering with parents so that they are truly picking up their child as quickly as possible and able to get them home and we're able to clean that space anticipating another child may come down? You know, it's not uncommon to have multiple students in the sickbay area when our flu season hits.
Well, the other thing I'm kind of curious about is it seems to me we have a shortage of substitutes as it is. Many of the substitutes are in the older age groups that might not really want to be coming in. Have we thought at all about surveying the substitutes that we use on a regular basis to seeing how they feel about being involved next?
Yeah, and if they're truly interested, we certainly will need to do that. And I know we have the referendum survey out right now. We want to get that back in and get some information back to those who participated. And I anticipate that when that survey closes, we may be even surveying our parents too just to say, what are your needs? What does it look like? Are you home working with kids? Do you have devices? Do you have space? Kind of where are some of those bottlenecks in homes as well? And what can we do to support as much as possible? And how much flexibility can we give parents? You know, we might have a parent that says, you know, if the numbers are high at all, I would just prefer to have my child home. And when things really drop off and numbers are low, I'll send them to school. But I want that flexibility that I may choose, I want them to be virtual, even on their non-virtual weeks for a while. Any kind of flexibility we bring in, I think, could be helpful as well.
Well, and on the other end of the spectrum, we have parents that because of the jobs that they have, need to be back in the office. And there just isn't enough childcare available right now in this situation. And they depend on bringing their kids to school. Yeah, it's another consideration.
Yeah, and so, you know, we've had some just very initial conversations of, you know, could we have some type of a site to help, even if it's for a few hours a day? And maybe it's what our BRAVE program ends up being, is that homework help, but it's offered for a chunk of time during the day to at least provide some reprieve to parents where they know, okay, at least this part of the day, the child's covered, lunch is provided. And they may be virtual with their teacher, but they're actually in the care of one of our staff members and able to get a little more small group or one-on-one during that time. Yeah, great point.
I think this is a question for Travis. I know that there's some places, at least at colleges, have talked about outfitting classrooms with a standard camera and microphone so that an in-class lessons could be more easily streamed or recorded or made available for recording. And I'm wondering if that is something that is feasible in our district? In case we do have to offer that kind of hybrid model, maybe it's not a good model for a school district.
I see Travis is on, I don't know if he's having problems.
I don't know if anybody has any comment on that, maybe the building principals, or maybe it's just a bad idea.
I think it's very possible to do that and to have things recorded for students who may not be in, whether they're out sick or their class is out for that week while they're being virtual. It just reminds me of when we were constructing our building and our construction company used to tell us, we can do anything for a cost.
Right, yeah, anything, right.
And with some lead time right now with the, you know, some things are short. It looks like Travis is back.
Yeah, just, we had talked about that actually a little bit with our team. And I believe that Travis was actually checking into some of the possibilities, just like every other school across the nation. So like, that's part of the, you know, the complication. But one of our wonders even was, as a school, was would there be the possibility even of a teacher having half of her kids in the room and, you know, broadcasting live to another place in the school where we'd have, you know, the kids together, the kids receiving that message with like a classified staff member, for example. And then there was, you know, the shared that way. But I know we talked quite a bit about that. And again, I think that Travis is looking into that. I'm not sure if he's phoned out so far.
So if you were to do that, I mean, it's not like we have double this. We do have a lot of empty space in your building. Would that be a scenario in which half the students wouldn't be at school that day and you were then able to spread the remainder half out among?
Well, really, again, like Mary said, we're really working to try to problem solve all different kinds of scenarios. But one of the scenarios that was brought up was, what if we do use every last space in our school, you know, including the music room, the art room, the media center, the cafeteria, all of those spaces? Because we probably wouldn't be able to use them in the same way anyways. And so if we could do that and, you know, like our messy project room and like all those places, could we spread kids out enough that they wouldn't be more than, you know, they could still be the six feet apart? And I don't know. So we're trying to problem solve all kinds of things without obviously any definite answers. But I do think it's possible that we could make it happen with the spaces that we have. We'd have to be really creative with what we have. But we already know that we'd be open for that versus, I hate to say it, but online schooling, certainly we were, you know, at a benefit and being able to do what we could. But it's certainly not the best-case scenario for a lot of our learners, especially younger levels.
Sure, I mean, I really want to have, I mean, everybody benefits from having the kids back in school. So I really appreciate the creativity and the brainstorming that is being done.
Yeah, and again, as Renee said, if we can just be thinking about, how small can we make that group of students and their rotation? So maybe it's only three classes in an area and they're all spread out and they're using one bathroom and we're not cross-mixing all of the kids across the building, but really keeping kids in a particular area just to reduce exposure and then aligning buses with that as well.
Very good. Any other comments with regard to the COVID update?
It looks like Travis is calling in because he's got mic issues. So I think if you bear with him for a minute, he'll be able to give you.
He'll be with us.
Okay.
Gary, I think that the additional layers that you had pointed out earlier to with regard to transportation and giving kids the amount of space that they need on transportation, that part will be tricky if we're trying to do all of the kids back at the same time, even spread out through the building. That would be an increase to transportation costs because we would need more buses. And I don't know that we have more buses or more drivers for that matter. But even if we were to look at staggering the kids then one way or the other, we also have to look at family structures and how to keep members of the family on the same schedule because of childcare purposes like that as well. There's so many layers to it to think through.
I think so too. And I think another thing that we talked about though too, and we've talked about, you know, potentially sending a survey out to parents, you know, of just gathering some more information as to their wishes and things too. But I guess one of my questions would be, would some parents opt to transport their children to school so they aren't on the bus? I don't know, that might be another possibility. I'm not saying it's going to be the masses, but there might be a pretty good chunk that prefers to do that and is able to do that maybe. I'm not sure.
Travis, are you with us?
I am, can you hear me now?
Yeah, did you hear the original question about just being able to outfit classrooms for distancing?
It's been an ongoing discussion with some of the other techs from school districts I've spoken with actually over the last couple of weeks about how we can go about having kind of a hybrid class like that, having, you know, a camera at some place in the room to kind of catch the teacher talking and then some type of microphone system also to, you know, help record the entire call so that it can be live, it can be recorded. You know, students can be onsite and offsite at the same time. So it is something we're looking into to see, you know, how do we do that in the classrooms? You know, and how many classrooms we need to outfit with something like that? That's probably been one of the biggest discussion points with, you know, a lot of school districts in the last two or three weeks is how do we go about preparing for some type of headbread situation like that? If the case comes up or we need to, you know, have some kids offsite and some kids onsite? You know, their biggest concern was, you know, what if parents just don't feel safe having the kids come to school? How do we prepare for that, you know, so that we can still offer them, you know, the classes that they need?
Okay, very good. Any other comments or questions or anything with regard to the lovely COVID virus?
It's what keeps us up at night.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now we have any comments about the open enrollment update?
Yeah, I have a question, David. In the, I think in the virtual school, I noticed that we've denied quite a few people and the common denominator seems to be special needs, but it's not 100%. So I just wondered if you could talk a little bit more about what drives us? When do we deny, when do we not deny?
I don't know if Becky wants to take that or I certainly can. It really comes down to meeting the needs of the individual student. And some students are able to have work on those, on their IEP goals and provide the kind of therapy and support that they need in a virtual setting. And for other students, the virtual setting is not the ideal place. And it's much better to support their IEP goals and needs in a brick and mortar setting. So that's really the common denominator there.
Thank you.
Yep, exactly. Some of the students that we did have to deny, it really came down to having some extraordinary needs that we just didn't feel like we could meet at this time. Maybe the more Odyssey School grows and the more programming we're able to support in Odyssey, it might be able to happen. But for now, there were just some pretty significant needs.
Thank you very much.
I think if things pan out the way we're thinking, we're going to see some nice growth with Odyssey for next year again. So that's exciting.
Yes, yeah, Odyssey has really been, well, it's been, it's a juggernaut.
And I think the additional students that we're seeing enrolling, a number of them actually, I don't want to say they've been recruited, but through conversation with existing students have chosen to open enroll. So I think that's really exciting that it's the quality of the school that's attracting additional students as well.
I'm wondering about the next item, which is a technical correction of policies, but there's not.
Yeah, and what happens is with, there's about 14 policies and administrative guidelines related to harassment, 504 plans, those kind of things. And the individuals are called district compliance officers. And a number of years ago, they changed and within the policy, you need to list the actual person and all of their contact information in the policy. So anytime one of those compliance officers changes, we need to update the policy. And when Christine Clumpers left last year and Becky came on board, we're now doing the updating to make sure all of those policies for the new year reflect that Becky Moran is the compliance officer. We have one male and one female compliance officer. Ultimately, anyone can go to anyone to get support and be moved in the right direction. But you have to list two and they recommend one male and one female. So Becky will be our new contact person and our other individual was Jonah when he came on board. So I think we've had more turnover with our student services, special ed directors in my time here than almost any other position. So it seems like we're doing this every few years. We need you to stay now, Becky, that we get these caught up.
Okay, well, very good. We'll have our eye out at our policy meetings for any occurrence of the words "compliance officer." Okay, next on the agenda is the 2019-2020 bullying report. The document is attached. Do any board members have any questions about the report? Questions or comments?
It's Betsy, just, I'm sorry, was someone else jumping in? I didn't want to interrupt. I was just going to say, the report continues to improve year after year after year. So thank you to everyone for your work on this. I remember when we first started this. And this is providing a much more complete picture for the parents. And it's really honoring the students that come in and say something. So thank you to all the hard work that goes into this.
You're here. Are there any other comments or questions about the information presented in the bullying report?
And I would just say, we don't report necessarily trends because any given year, any group of students, particular things happening in a building, we wouldn't want to in any way suppress any numbers or have anyone feel like they didn't want to report because we're trying to lower our numbers. We want people just to share what's happening, what their experiences is. So we have good information and we can respond to every individual incident.
One thing that I think I understood from the report, but I want to just check, were there any reports of bullying, cyberbullying in particular, after we went virtual?
Good, very good question. I did not receive any reports. And when I reached out to the principals and guidance counselors at the beginning of May to make sure I had all of the reports, nothing new was shared with me. So I don't believe we've had any reports of that.
And certainly if there's anyone else there and that isn't accurate, let us know. We'll update the report, we'll investigate obviously the situation and update the report.
Yeah, I want to compliment the administrators and the staff who've really put a lot of time and energy into reducing bullying and stressing the need to reduce bullying, you know, ideally eliminate it from our schools. Thank you very much. If there are no other comments or questions?
Thank you, Becky.
We'll move to the next item, which in general are the school operations reports. We'll move to the next item, which in general are the school operations reports. If we think of them as a group, would anybody care to ask questions or comments on any of the building highlights report prepared by our administrators? Food service report? Any, any questions for Jonah about our, the April food service report? Okay, moving on to the interim budget report. It's provided as an attachment. Are there any questions for Jonah about the interim budget report? I think that brings us to our, the end of our open meeting, our open session. Jolene, I'm not sure, did I, is there another link for our open session?
Another link for the closed session.
And I can email that out to everybody one more time here if you don't have access to that, so.
Well, I probably do, but maybe it's a good idea to email it out.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Hold on, did we need to have a motion to adjourn the open and then go to the?
Yeah, we do, Betsy. I got you, so moved.
I will second.
Too late, Nate.
Well, I don't see, what did I miss that? Okay, I guess we have to consider. All right, so who moved that, Nate?
Betsy and then Nate.
Betsy, okay, sorry. Oh, I see, I moved off of it. I, I do apologize to everybody. One of these days, I'll get it right. We are almost adjourned. Okay, we are, our open session is adjourned. Thank you very much. And now I will, I guess, we can leave this meeting and go to the next, go to the next meeting.
And where's the link?
Go into your Google calendar, it should be in there.
It looks like if you go into your district email, district email calendar.
It was sent out as an email on June 10th at 1:48 PM.
Thank you, Nate. There we go. All right, well, I will see people in a minute, hopefully. And I will, I'm going to leave this meeting.